Everybody ready? Good evening, everybody.
Good evening, Mayor.
Welcome to our meeting. Tonight is Wednesday, March 27. This is our agenda meeting. And for the record, the time is 7:00 P.M. The first item we have is a joint public hearing, which we need a motion to go into joint public hearing.
Second.
It's been moved to second to go into joint public hearing. Is there any discussion? There being none, all in favor of indicating, so I'm saying yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no? Accordingly, we're in joint public hearing. This is a joint public hearing to receive comments on OA 2019-01, text amendment to the Town of Nashville code ordinances, Chapter 18, Land Use Regulation, Article 3 subdivision, Division 2 procedures for review and approval of subdivisions. This is a rather complex issue. And what it amounts to is a language change that's going to deal with how construction plats are approved by inserting the planning director's name in the literature, also concurrent with the town manager, supposedly in line with some type of law. Has anyone in the general public got anything to say about this text changed? Anyone in the council have any comments?
Yes, I do. The pages are not numbered, so we may want to number the pages as we refer to things. I notice it says...
Louise, before you start, has everybody had an opportunity to look at the actual state law?
No.
This is a copy of the law that came to me just a few minutes ago.
So does this preempt anything that we...
No, no. What it does is just reinforces that what we're already doing is legal. And adding in, the director's got some administrative issues, which we'll get to in further discussion. But, okay, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Why, I notice it mentions town manager or planning director. Why not town manager and planning director?
The reason being is then we would both have to sign. For legal documents, your conjunctions matter. So "and" means both have to sign, and "or" means one or the other can sign.
Okay. But the manager would have his eyes on this as well?
Yes. So what now is happening is that all the plats are coming through the planning office first, rather than being submitted to the town manager. And this has been our practice for the town for several planning directors before me. And so what I'm doing is updating the ordinance or asking you to update the ordinance so that it reflects our current practices and procedures of the plats coming through the planning department first for review before they come to the town council. So I'm the one who calls the TRC meetings, and the planning director's the one who gives the recommendation for the staff of whether or not to approve or deny the construction plats. And then we bring them before the planning board and then for the town council to review and approve based on staff and planning board's recommendations. So right now, what is happening in the ordinance, the language says the town manager receives all those documents, and the town manager distributes them. And what is happening in practice in our office is that they're coming through my office, the planning office, first for submission. And then I am disseminating them to the TRC and review authorities, NCDOT, and anybody in Nash County who needs to see them for well and septic or health code, that kind of thing, or to any of the town engineers that we have on contract for stormwater. So we're reviewing that in the planning department and all the other department heads, but it's not coming through the town manager as his office. So what we're doing is updating the ordinance to reflect those current procedures and practices.
But the manager would be read into everything?
Manager's read into everything, yes.
That was my concern, that it would be town manager or planning director.
No, the town manager...
Really be on top of it.
Yeah, the town manager is on top of everything.
Well, I have a comment along that same line. Mrs. Rabel, can you hear me? We've got a brand-new system here.
It's a little weak.
A little weak? Now, can you hear me?
Oh, yeah.
All righty. Just a matter of placement, then. Thank you very much. I have to work with this idea of the conjunction. By using "or," it means that we now have a divided set of administrations. "And" means both people. "Or" means either persons. And it's very possible where, like the Aviation Avenue situation over there, have a situation where all other requirements have been met, that a request for approving a final plat can go directly from the planner to the town council, completely going around the manager.
Not necessarily.
I didn't say necessarily.
Oh, okay.
Just listen. Okay. Another issue is using "or," is that going through the process, which is several levels, a petitioner could potentially bounce back and forth between the manager and the planning director for approvals. And the worst possible scenario, of course, is to create a position for which the manager is responsible, but the planning position would then not be responsible to the manager by ordinance change. By saying "or," you're also in power, which makes you also independent, which is something I do not wish to happen. Now, in reading the law, which I just passed out to everybody, it says that everybody's got to have an ordinance for planning. All right, and the ordinance may provide that final decisions on preliminary plats and final plats are to be made by, one, the city council; number two, the city council on recommendation of a designated body; or a designated planning board, technical review committee, or other designated body. Okay. From and after the effective date of a subdivision ordinance is adopted...
Or staff person.
I did? Okay. Thank you, thank you. A designated planning board, technical review committee, or other designated body, or staff person. From and after that effective date of a subdivision ordinance that is adopted by the city, no subdivision plat of land within the city's jurisdiction shall be filed or recorded until it shall have been submitted to and approved by the council or appropriate agency specified in the subdivision ordinance. And until this ordinance shall... And until this approval shall have been entered on the face of the plat, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Now, we're already doing that.
Yes, we are.
And by streamlining the thing, what we're doing, we're just simply removing from our manager authority that's actually his, because the manager has the moral responsibility for running the town. Because people would come to him with plats or whatever, of course, they'd probably come to the planner to start with. And he is the person who delegates the work, not creating an independent person to do as they wish. I've got real issues with that. Of course, the council may have other opinions.
That was what I was getting at.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Mayor, I have reservations about this too, just now getting the law. And I've read through it, and I guess you can interpret it the way you want to interpret it.
The way you want to interpret it, right.
And it can go either way. What I'm fearing is that... No disrespect to our planning director, but I don't want to start giving her the ultimate say-so on certain things, which this could very well happen, because later down the road, if she can do it, why can't the fire chief, the police chief, and all the other departments have that same autonomy?
Yep, there is.
We don't want that to happen.
That's the issue. Right, right.
If I may speak?
Sure.
So the first thing for the construction plats, you are still seeing the construction plats, and the council is still the approval authority for the construction plats. The final plat for the construction plat is only a compliance document. So what you are doing when you review a final plat for the construction plat is that you are reviewing to make sure it is complete and accurate according to what hasn't been already approved by council for the construction plat. And what that allows is it allows the town manager or the planning director to sign that it is in compliance with the construction plat. The construction plat will still go before you and still be approved by you. So that is the authorizing document for the final plat. What the final plat does, in this case, is it mimics the construction plat for completeness to show where the lots, the setbacks, and all other ordinances, policies, and plans, and conditions that you've placed on the construction plat are represented on the final plat itself. So the final plat is a standing document that is recorded by the Register of Deeds, and it does have some certificates on there that need a proper approval through either town manager, planning director, to authorize that it has been reviewed and is in compliance with the construction plat that council has approved. So it is a standing document, but it relies on the construction plat that the council sees and approves as part of the first step. The final plat is the last step before a lot can be sold or developed. So the construction plat for the subdivisions come through you first, and this is an administrative step at the very last step. So the law that you have in front of you, I think it's maybe 372, 373, somewhere in the 370s.
373.
What that is saying is that the construction plats and the final plats have to match. So you're approving the construction plat already as step one. What this does in the proposed ordinance is streamline that document so that the developer's not waiting another six weeks to sell or develop lots that you have already approved for sale and development. What that does for the developer is it pushes his timeline forward, and it allows him to get his project management in on time, rather than delaying just to have the board review something that they have already reviewed and approved. Now, it is not giving the planning director any more authority over any other decision-making that happens in the town, because I'm still bound by every other ordinance in the zoning code and the organizational chart for the town of Nashville. So I'm not creating autonomy. What I'm creating is an administrative-level decision to say that a final plat complies with an order that you have already put on the books and something that you have already agreed to by decision from a previous meeting.
Yeah. Well, administrative decisions does create autonomy. We've got another issue going also. You know, we're presently between managers. And it would probably be wise if we delayed this in some form until we got a permanent manager, let him sign off on it. Because I'd prefer to see what this person wants to say, because they got ultimately a person who's going to have to live with it. So I'd rather work on it in between... I'd rather work on it at that point in time than later.
If that pleases the council, we can do that.
And if we delay, it's not... Nothing's going to be endangered.
Right. And if that pleases the council, that's definitely an option you can look at at your next meeting, because this is just the public hearing. So any decision to delay will be part of your decision at the next agenda meeting, so you can table the discussion then when you're actually making a decision.
It'll be our next legislative meeting, which is Tuesday night.
Yes, which is Tuesday night. The other thing that you may want to consider with that position is this is a planning director position. I may not be in this position in the future, and whoever is signing for the town manager, so we're looking at it from position to position, rather than from person to person.
Of course.
So even though we have an interim town manager, and a new town manager may have something different to add, it's still based on the position and whoever's sitting in that chair.
Absolutely. Okay. Thank you very much.
Julie, I was going to say, at the bottom of page six and the top of page seven, it looks like the town council's cut out of the process altogether.
That is for the final plat. That is the streamlining of the process where you are approving the construction plat. And then the final plat does not have to come back before you a second time. So you're still approving the first document. You're not approving the second document, because the second document is based off of the first document, and we're reviewing it for compliance. So we're reviewing it to make sure it matches the first document. So we can put you back in as the council if you want to see that document again. But again, that adds the six weeks to the timeline, because I have to have that document 20 days before the planning board, so I can do my planning board agendas, and I can do my planning board notices of public meeting. And then we can have it reviewed, and then we can get it into the town council meeting. So it adds six weeks for our submittal deadlines. If we write that, you still want to review the final plat. Again, what it's doing is streamlining that process to take that extra six weeks out, so you're not seeing something twice when you've already seen it before as the first document.
And we also, by using that method, we're also bypassing a normally political process, which is, in this case, haste may not be the best plan.
For a final plat, once you have approved the construction plat, there is very minimal criteria for you to be able to deny the final plat. Because it is a compliance document, it should meet the construction plat. And the only way you can deny the final plat is if it is not in compliance with the construction plat itself. So the time for your political process is during the construction plat, when we have the open meetings and have a discussion period on that. The construction plat is really where the... That first round of comments is where it happens, because the final plat just makes sure that everything that happened at that construction plat approval process is being met, and all those conditions are being met.
Okay.
Mayor, member of the council, I submitted the first plat of this nature about 44 years ago, when I was a planner in Sanford. And back in that day, the council did approve the preliminary plats. The council did approve the final plats, as they can do. What has typically happened in Cary and these fast-growing areas where you've got a lot of development going on, it slows people down. It takes time. And what she's saying is actually correct. The final plat has to mirror the preliminary plat to a T. It has... It does not have to have the topo and the water lines and sewer lines on it. It is a document that's filed, and when you go to sell, buy a lot, it has the dimensions and shows the street, and it shows the dedication and all those things that are necessary. So along the way, people have started delegating that responsibility. You can delegate it, and you can either not delegate it and do it. You can delegate it only to the manager, or you can delegate it to a staff person. Those are your choices. That's the logic behind the request.
Yeah. I'm going to agree with what you're saying, but we're neither Cary nor Morrisville.
We're not.
And I kind of see things on a first-person basis as we move along.
And we do want to be seen as developer-friendly, because that six weeks does make a big difference to developers on being able to sell or develop lots.
Mayor, like what you just said, we're not a Cary, one of those fast-growing cities, and we don't have a permanent town manager, and we don't have a council member that's here with us tonight. And there are too many questions that we've got about this. I'd like to see us just put this off and let us digest it a little bit more, so we're all on the same page.
Well, let's think on it then, because Tuesday nights, we have to make a decision about whether we want to table it or continue it, or whatever we want to do with it. So we'll read the law and see what kind of comparison you can give. I just got this at 5:30, so...
And what I would like to point out, too, are some of the things that are not changing as part of the final plat process. Part of the things that are not changing is that the final plat acceptance by staff does not mean that you are accepting any dedication of riderways, easements, roads, infrastructure, utilities. You still have to adopt all those by resolution. So you would still see a resolution. The bond, you would still see. I'm not changing any of the bonding requirements. I'm not proposing any changes to that. And we're not proposing any changes to who can call the bond. The bond can still be called by the town manager or council. So those are still staying the same as written. The only thing that we're really cleaning up are some of the certificate languages to make it match the new regulations for general statutes, 47-30, where the surveyor certificates need to be changed to match those languages that were changed. And the approval authority, which is, again, for the compliance of the final plat, not necessarily the approval of any dedication or anything like that. And it takes the construction plat still to council so that you still have review and authority over the construction plat. We're not taking power away from the board. We're streamlining it for the developers to make sure that that last step is done in a timely manner. That way, they can move forward with their project timelines. And again, if this is something you want to table, Tuesday night would be the night to table it. But when you do table it, we'll need direction to staff.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Julie, what about the minor subdivision? The minor subdivisions, the five lot?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, would that bypass us altogether?
It already does.
It already does?
It already does. The way it's written, it already does bypass you. And it... But it goes to the town manager instead of the planning office. And that's been on the books since 1979.
How many minor plats have we had in town?
I do not know how many minor plats we've had in town. We've had two, I think, since I've been here, and the council has known about both of them. That was the Todd Spikes, was the five lots subdivision that we saw the other nine last month or so. And we have one that's currently been placed on the TRC agenda for April. So that is one that's currently been submitted to be reviewed.
We had one once on First Street, right there in the curve, across from the grocery store by the railroad track. Those people had a five-year plan that expired. Then they renewed it. And I've heard nothing else from them. Is that still current, or do you...
I don't know. I can check that. With current predecessors, you know, having been before my time, I'm not sure what all was approved before me, but we can check. And the other thing is that the five-year construction timeline for sunsetting is still in there. We didn't change the timeline for that. So on a construction plat, the approval is still good for five years, and only five years. And any amendments to that still has to come before the board.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, other comments? All right, we'll hold her in abeyance then until Tuesday night, and we'll make a decision. Okay, everything said and done. We'll need a motion to go out of joint public hearing.
Second.
It's been moved to second to go out of joint public hearing. Is there any discussion? There being none, all in favor of indicating, so I'm saying yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no? Accordingly, we're back in regular session. Third item is consideration of a resolution, 2019-06. Resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Nashville appointing a deputy finance officer. If you'll notice in your agenda, we have to go through the legislative process of holding a hearing here to get this out approved. So we're... Give you a summary of the issue here. We are requesting approval by the council to deputize the current assistant finance officer, Russell B. Langley, in his role. He will act as fiscal officer of the town in the absence of the interim finance officer. He will have the authority to review and sign contracts, check requests, purchase orders, and... I'm sorry, purchase orders for pre-ordits efficiency. And so we have a resolution of that effect. Can we adopt the resolution tonight? We have to... This session. Can we do it tonight? Okay. All right. I thought I had to wait for Tuesday, but... Okay, here's the resolution, which I must read. It's Resolution Number 2019-06. Resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Nashville appointing a deputy finance officer, whereas North Carolina General Statutes 15925B authorizes a deputy finance officer to be designated by the governing board. Therefore, be it resolved that the Town Council of the Town of Nashville, North Carolina, through adoption of this resolution, hereby authorizes that Section 1, Russell Langley is appointed as deputy finance officer. His authority as deputy finance officer is deemed properly designated for purposes of North Carolina General Statutes 15925B and shall be deemed approved to sign the certificates described in North Carolina General Statutes 15928. Section 2, Lynn Hobbs and Sandra Griffin are removed as deputy finance officers, adopted this 27th day of March 2019, with appropriate signatures and attestations. The Chair, he motioned to approve the resolution.
Second.
It's been moved to second. We approve the resolution. Any discussion? There being none, all in favor of indicating, so I'm saying yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no? Okay, he is official. All right. That takes care of everything. Council comments? Mr. Taylor? Have a comment for us?
No, the only comment I have is, I found out after I got here why we've got such a large crowd in here tonight. And I was hoping they'd just came to hear us at a regular meeting, but I found out that they didn't. But for the reasons that they are here, I'm again glad that they are here.
Good.
That shows that our citizens here in Nashville has got an ear to what's going on here and want to have us say or at least be considered in whatever decisions we make. And I want to thank all of you for showing up tonight. And even though, and the mayor will get into it later, but I hope this is not your last night. If you don't get to say what you want to say tonight, come back when you can. Say what you want to say. Thank you.
I just... My comments are, it's always good to see people here at meetings. So when I see them the next day, at least they heard it up here. And pretty much they're on board with what's being said. They might not agree with it, but at least they know where it came from.
Know what's going on, yeah, of course.
That's it.
Okay, thank you.
My understanding is there are a lot of people here tonight in support of Joey Corbett, our interim police chief. And my understanding is there are a lot of people who would like to be heard tonight. And because we are... It's a public meeting. I would suggest that they be heard.
Well, this is a public meeting. We have free speech on Tuesday night, which is our regular legislative session. But, you know, I'm a free-speech person. But on the issue of the police chief, the applications for the position are still open. And will be until April the 12th. So no decision's going to be made until after that point in time. And I don't know if other applications have come in or not. I don't know anything about that until they close. But in the interest of everybody coming, I understand there was some recruitment to get everybody here, which is a good plan, I guess, because everybody's hooked together. I kind of like that game. But what I like to do, because I don't want anybody to go away disappointed, because, you know, I don't want anybody to go away mad, because I like to keep everybody happy. If you want to elect one spokesman to say what you're going to say, we'll give him two minutes. You'll save yours till Tuesday. Anybody else wants to volunteer for two minutes? Okay, young man? Would you come to the podium and state your name and address? Put a record, please.
I appreciate you calling me a young man. My name is Jay Smith, 112 Lucille Street, Nashville, North Carolina. Nashville, North Carolina. I'm here in 110% support of Joey Corbett. About 10 or 11 years ago, I had a break-in at my house. Officer Corbett was one of the police that came, very professional, did an outstanding job. Within two to three days, there was an arrest made, and I had the majority of my property back.
That's good.
And I just feel like that a man of his experience, he knows the town, he knows the people, the people trust him, and I just can't see of us hiring anybody else but Mr. Corbett.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you. And I assume everybody else is in agreement? Okay.
Can we not hear from somebody?
There was another hand in the back, ma'am.
Was there another hand?
Yes, there's two or three more.
I can't, I can't see behind his post. Well, I thought we were just going to let one person speak collectively, but come on, let me hear it. State your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Ashley Henry, and I actually drove all the way from Durham County.
You came from Durham County?
I did.
Oh, good for you.
I used to be a resident here till December, and I moved to Durham. I feel like Joseph Corbett should be the chief, because if it was for him, I would not be here today. I was a young girl when I first met him, doing the wrong things, and he put me in a better path. With him putting me in a better path, I was able to receive a GED and move forward in my life. Also, as an officer who loves his community and loves his people in his community, if it wasn't also for him, I wouldn't be here alive today either. For a couple of years ago, I was diagnosed as a diabetic, and my sugar was at 600, and I didn't have money for insulin, which is very expensive, and I didn't, I was almost being put out of my apartment. I called Joey. Joey, hey, I have an issue going on, this is what's going on. Now, one time that he said to me, hey, did you reach out to a church? Did you go to the social services? He just said, when can you meet me? And he made sure I had my insulin, and he made sure I still stayed in my apartment, and for him, I am thankful for that, and I'm grateful, because he has reached out to his community. He comes and he speaks to us on a daily basis. He drove around our neighborhood, and he comes out there and he speaks, he knows all the elderly people. He even knows some of the guys that you would think that were the worst people on the streets, but they have respect for this man. And for your local so-called drug dealers and thugs who have respect for him, I feel like he should take this place as a police chief for all of us, and he's a great person. I wouldn't want anybody else to take that position other than him. Like I said, I came all the way from Durham County, and I did this on the sake of him.
Well, appreciate you coming.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Very good. With all that said and done, thanks for coming down from Durham. Hope you don't go back tonight.
May I...
Dangerous out on the highways. Yes, ma'am.
Can we hear from some other people since?
Well, why don't some, somebody say something. Louise over here jumping up and down for people to speak, so let's say something.
Speak up.
Oh, here's my lady here. Yeah.
Good evening, everybody. I'm here...
Would you state your name for the record, please?
Okay. Levania Hetchpath, 326 North Aviation Avenue.
Thank you.
I'm here in behalf of Joey Corbett. Been knowing him a long time, and like the lady just said, he's a good friend to everybody, everybody. He's a down-to-earth person. He listens to what you're saying, and if you've got a problem, he tries to help you the best way he can. And if anybody deserved to have that seat, I think Joey Corbett deserved to have it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, since we got the door open, who else? Cindy, will you state your name and address for the record, please?
Cindy Pocket, 1405 Fairfield Drive here in Nashville, and I'm not going to tell you I'm not going to speak again Tuesday night.
Don't tell what?
I'm not going to say I won't speak again Tuesday night.
Okay, okay. Sign up when you come.
Thank you, council members, for the opportunity to speak. I've worked in Nashville for well over 30 years, and I have lived in the city limits for more than 20. In that time, I, along with other Nashville residents, have come to know a quality of life that many other towns long for. We feel safe, and in today's world, that isn't something you take lightly. Nashville has seen a lot of change in the past year, but one thing that has never wavered is the commitment that Joey Corbett has shown to our town. He knows our town, he knows the residents, the neighborhoods, the business owners, and he knows the children that are growing up here. He has formed relationships and earned the trust of so many that he has served over the last 13 years. He has a calm demeanor about him and thinks things through with a level head instead of making knee-jerk reactions. During his time here in Nashville, Joey has received several accolades, Officer of the Year, Life Saving Award, Beyond the Call of Duty Award, Chief's Commendation, and the Community in Service and Dedication Award, excuse me. Although he may not have the education on paper that other applicants can offer, he is vested in this community. He has the commitment and passion to serve this town, because this is his home, this is what he loves, and this is his Nashville. Thank you for your time and for considering someone that has always made Nashville his top priority.
Thank you. Okay, thank you very much. Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.